Please stand up for your flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Chief Justice, we're on.
Counselor Turba?
Here.
Counselor Ruddy?
Here.
The motion here. John, not here. Counselor, okay, Supervisor Matt Roberts here.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to be skipping the proclamation today for the extra mile today. We're going to try to put it on the next agenda for Mrs. Ack. So we're going to start today with a public hearing for a local law authorizing property tax levy increase. And first up, we have Lynn McHugh.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Lynn McHugh. I just wanted to share a few thoughts. Can I move this so I can like, I think we should do this in general. Okay, all right. Sorry, Ralph. I just feel like I want to be able to see everybody. Okay, so in order to pass our budget, the council has to vote to override the tax cap. Taxpayers know we have to invest in our city, and I think most of us are willing to pay our fair share. However, we just want to see a return on our investment to see growth and know that departments are running efficiently. We have some things to feel good about. Through creative collaboration between the DPW and the Water Department, there will be no increase to our water and sewer rates for the coming year. We have a city manager who has assembled a budget that will stop our general fund from bleeding out. We have onboarded a city planner who has already been able to cut costs and save the city money by taking on administrative roles for other departments. He is streamlining processes, eliminating redundancies, and working toward a more modern, efficient, and accountable system that supports residents, businesses, and long-term growth. Here's the thing: we get what we pay for. Investing in good, well-qualified employees can pay for itself in savings over the long run. Reducing turnover, ensuring current employees are working at peak efficiency, and focusing on future investment will set us on a better course. Let's flip the script. Oneida is a great place to live. People might complain that our taxes are high, but when taking into consideration tax and equalization rates in neighboring municipalities, the amenities we offer puts us ahead. We get good value for what we pay. In Oneida, we have a dedicated 24/7/365 Police and Fire Department, a diverse network of parks and trails, an amazing library that consistently offers diverse programs and free activities for the community, and a rec department that offers a wide range of programs for adults and kids. I encourage the public to look at the actual dollar amount instead of reacting to the percentages. The first proposed budget, and I know it's been a little tweaked, so it's going to be even better now, the proposed budget would increase taxes on a house valued at $100,086.40 in the inside district and $43 annually in the outside district. That's 23 cents a day. Guess what? For only a few pennies more, you can add two officers to OPD and make your neighborhood arguably safer. A few more pennies and you might be able to repair the sidewalks. It was suggested by some council members that people are moving out of Oneida because their taxes are too high. This assessment felt anecdotal to me at best, so I asked realtors if this aligned with what they're seeing. It does not. According to realtors I spoke with, people are moving out because of employment opportunities elsewhere and because of crime. People want to buy houses in safe neighborhoods that are well-maintained. In an emergency, they want first responders to come quickly to help. Businesses choose communities that are growing and thriving. All of these things depend on community investment. I do hope that everyone has learned that running on a platform of no tax increases is a short-sighted plan and a ticking time bomb. This illusion leads the public to believe that we're getting by on less, but we aren't. Last year, we got by by tapping into and draining the general fund, leaving it inaccessible to us, the next administration. If you continually step over dollars to pick up pennies, eventually someone has to foot that bill. This is where we are now and why we need to vote to override the tax cap. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Let me drive this back.
No, you're fine. Technically, you're supposed to be talking at council, that's why it's the point of the way.
No, it's good to be there. Don't make it work again.
Okay, next up is Joe Magley.
In the history of the tax cap override in regard to the Madison County Board of Supervisors, they have never not passed that resolution, that local law. Typical to years when the proposed budget would ultimately not exceed that tax cap, that local law would then be rescinded by another resolution. In the history of the tax cap override here in the City of Oneida, between 2010 and 2020, only once, in 2010, did the resolution fail. In 2014, that resolution was proposed, then dropped. From 2021 through 2024, that tax cap override resolution has failed to pass in each of those budget years. As you consider your tax cap override resolution vote being this evening, bill shows up, that resolution before you regarding the 2026 budget, I feel it's incredibly important to take into consideration what budget increase you on the council have already approved for the budget year 2026. Both the police and fire contracts were unanimously approved by this council, and the CSEA contract is also before you on this agenda. All three union contracts, which were negotiated in good faith and are vital in maintaining and protecting the many essential City of Oneida employees and services who provide that to the residents and the taxpayers in the community that we rely on every day. All three contracts provide wage increases above that tax cap mandated 3.9%. Now, consider also the subsequent increase in not only the retirement cost for the employees, but the healthcare increases that are expected in 2026. Not passing this tax cap override is nothing more than not paying the bill on the services that you agreed to. It's the budgetary equivalent of dining and dashing, enjoying a wonderful meal probably with a few cocktails, then slithering out the door before you're paying the bill. Without passing the tax cap override, you're requiring every department to take monies out of every budget line besides salaries and benefits. That means less money for staffing, less money for training, for building and equipment maintenance or improvements. This is simply kicking the can down the road, and in the world of pay me now or pay me later, you're choosing the latter. The obscene use of the general fund to balance the budget or pay for unbudgeted expenses is both fiscally irresponsible and obviously not sustainable. It's time to shift the public conversation from what the tax rate is from previous bombastic statements like "we pay too much for taxes" to how our City of Oneida property taxes factually compare locally and regionally, and how much value those tax dollars bring to the residents. So when the opportunity presents itself, I strongly urge you all to unanimously vote to pass the resolution for the tax cap override. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we did not open, we did not get a motion to open that.
We got to do it again?
So...
It's been recorded. So if they open the public hearing and they go through the motion, do both of the people who presented agree that the city clerk will have taken and incorporated into the public hearing?
That's fine.
Thank you. And if you have something written that you want to submit, you could do it after the public hearing's been opened, and she can rough this out.
That's fine.
So can I get a...
Motion.
Okay. And then can I get the all in favor?
Aye.
Before you close it?
I have a couple of point-of-order questions, if I may. First of all, I noticed we did not do public comments, which normally is getting before the public hearing.
No.
No, they're not.
They're not? Oh, we do that afterward?
Yeah.
Are we, so are we going to do all the public hearings and then all the voting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, a motion to close that.
Well, we'll just acknowledge, just like I just did, we're just going to acknowledge the speakers, and if they have anything that they'd like to submit, that would be, you can do it at the end.
At the end, we'll do it.
Okay, thank you. Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, so, so next up is the public hearing for miscellaneous utility billing for unpaid services.
Motion.
Thank you.
I was just telling you what it was. We're just trying to help you out. Yeah, I mean, I just want everybody on this floor before we motioned it, but yeah, we're good.
No, I need a second.
You got a second?
Yeah, I have a second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
We do not have anyone signed up for this public hearing. So, can I get a motion to close it?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any notes? Any extensions? All right, next up is the public hearing for the 2026 City Mayor's Budget. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second. All right. Ralph, it's taller, you're up.
This is just opening the public hearing.
It's just opening.
Okay.
All in favor?
He just said all in favor.
All in favor?
We are good.
I thought so. Okay.
This is one of the most fun meetings I've spent for a while. A lot of levity. So my question on the budget, having sat through three of the four and spoken to the chief of police, is my understanding is that if you have two new police officers, that would be approximately revenue-neutral because it would reduce the overtime. And so my understanding, based on listening to the three hearings, was that you're only going to approve one of the two, even though two would be almost revenue-neutral. And I'm wondering if somebody can explain that. That's my, that's my only budget proper question, then I have an opening comment whenever that is. Now, you know what? I'll do it now so we can just get it over with. Yeah, so as I watch this hearing process, I think you guys ought to put a, an item on the vote next fall to change how you do this. What you've got right now is the budget is due on October 31st, the election was November 6th, and then four of the six people on the common council who are negotiating this are not going to be here for the beginning. And then we had to have a fourth hearing the day before to get things squared away, and like last year, some of the people had questions. I'd like to suggest that your budget year ought to start in June or July, and that in January, when you have the new people come in, a month or two after that, you start the budget process, and give them four months instead of two. I think you'd get a better, more consensus-driven approach that way. And then for the chief who will, is here, I don't know what the crime statistics are for Oneida compared to other cities, and at some point, I'd like to hear you tell us what that is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to close that publicly?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any notes? All right. Next up is the public hearing for the local law amending 12.2 of the charter to require supermajority for the common council to remove the city manager.
Motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
First, or Joe Mag, you are.
First and all.
Couldn't resist.
So, those that fail to learn from the past are doomed to repeat it. We've all heard that expression or a variation of it over time, so let's make history be our guide on this issue regarding amended city manager removal language in the city charter. In March of last year, by a simple majority vote of the council, a resolution was passed to reduce the educational requirements and possibly substitute simple acceptable management experience for those city manager qualifications. That resolution was subsequently vetoed by Mayor Rossi, and that veto held because a supermajority of the whole number of voting members of the council didn't produce that fifth vote, which was needed to override the veto. At that same ugly April council meeting where the mayor's veto was upheld, a resolution was presented to remove that current city manager, Dr. Selby. Had Dr. Selby not resigned prior to that resolution being presented, that resolution would have been passed by a simple majority again, four of the seven. Had Dr. Selby instead protested that resolution, requesting the reasons for removal, having his ability to reply to those reasons, and/or being afforded a public hearing on the matter, all specific language, removal language, in that city charter section 12.2 titled "removal." Mayor Rossi could have simply vetoed that removal resolution, and I can trust that, again, his veto would have held. Removal of the city manager by the common council should not be shaded in personal or political motivations, but should be solely based on performance and/or professional shortcomings if alleged. Removal of the city manager is an extremely serious action and should require a high bar to implement. Any misconduct, or in the words of Councilor Zerba, "Any egregious behavior exhibited by the city manager warrants a supermajority of the council to enact." A veto-proof majority should be that high bar required for removal. So I encourage you tonight to vote on Resolution Number Two on the agenda creating that high bar for removal. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to close that?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is moving on to public hearing. Vincent B.
Earlier, I sent everyone here around the council an email, and I was just looking to submit it as part of the record. Some paper copies?
Just, we have to get it certified. Thank you. Any old business from council?
Yeah.
I'm just getting me out of this confabulated today. Any old business from council? Move on to the reports, mayor's report. I really don't have anything crazy. It's been a couple, we've been here often these last couple of weeks trying to sift through this budget, and I believe that, you know, none of us are comfortable with it, which means that we all sacrificed a little bit for it, so I think that honestly, that's a good thing. Yeah, that's all I really have. Supervisors' report?
Yes, it's going to be pretty quick. We're in the same situation that the city's in. We're finalizing our budget, and Joe is absolutely correct. I'm the chair of the finance committee, so I'm in charge of the committee that does the budget, and we do every year, we change all of the law to remove the tax cap during the budgeting process, and then we do go through the budgeting process, and depending on how we do, depending on the year, because some years are a lot heavier bars than others, we rescind that tax cap, or rescind the local law, or we go above the tax cap. Last year, we went above the tax cap this year. You can go on the Madison County website if you'd like, and we've got some new software, and you can look at the whole budget. There's a lot of graphical stuff, there's a lot of the actual budget, which is really boring them on, which we might as well, is there, and we plan on through some changes in a lot of the way we are splitting up the Oneida Nation money and some of the tax money that we don't expect to go above the tax cap this year, although we have the best. So, other than that, it's, we call it silly time at the county because we actually have an open session, we don't actually close the meetings, and there's a lot of different resolutions flying around, but it looks pretty good. The other thing is, we have, we're pretty happy as a group with the, we have three new supervisors from Lebanon, Lennox, and I believe Hamilton coming on in January, and they seem very excited, and we're excited, so I think things seem to be going pretty well around the horseshoe at the county. That's all I got.
Thank you. Matt, what do you anticipate percentage rise? Because I think it's a little over five.
It's 3.9, I think. Yeah. Like I said, it's interesting, you should go on the website and look at it, because one of the things that I can't stand about budgets, already, some people can't, is that it's, it's just a huge spreadsheet, and there's a lot of interesting graphics and data, you know, where does the tax money come from, where does it go, the percentage by different departments, and like you guys, a lot of times, when you got a cut, there's very, a lot of this, 94% of our budget is mandated, so we only get a 6% of the money to play with, and the two most important for the citizens of Madison County, one is keeping us safe, so the Sheriff's Department, we don't want to cut them, and then the Highway Department. So the infrastructure and the safety of our citizens are very difficult things to deal with, and Steve would know because he's been in the budget hearings, working hard with the sheriff to make sure that we keep everybody safe and stay under the tax law. And I think everybody did a fabulous job. All the department has to get us there, so, but go on the website and look at it. If you like graphs, you'll like it. If you like spreadsheets, you'll like it, too.
Thank you, Supervisor Rabbitt. Supervisor Rabbitt, say.
Yeah, so we've just echoed the mayor's comments, spent a lot of time in here in the last few weeks. I would just like to extend my gratitude to the entire common council. Thank you for sticking through this process and for all the discussions and the back-and-forth, and staying down with me and talking about everything that we did. So I sincerely appreciate it. This has definitely been a challenging budget, but it was very nice to see everybody collaborating and working together to get it pushed through. So I will say that was one thing that I was very grateful for, and that's all I have for the evening.
Thank you.
Can I get the approval of the minutes for November 5th, 2025?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any notes, any extensions? Let's pass. Can I get the approval of minutes for November 10th, 2025?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any notes, any extensions? Let's pass. Can I now get the approval of minutes for November 12th, 2025?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any notes, any extensions? Let's pass. All right, can I get the approval of warrant number 22?
Result of order number 22, Jefferson ACH payments in the amount of $1,438,876.90 as ordered by the volunteer committee are hereby approved for penance in the usual manner of discussion with the controller or a third party duly retained by the City of Oneida to perform self-service.
Motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any notes, any extensions? Motion's passed. I'll now turn the meeting over to our city clerk, say your question.
Item number one, monthly reports. Received, placed, and filed monthly reports from the city clerk, city engineer, coast department, fire department, parks and recreation department, planning department, police department.
Motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any notes, any extensions? Motion's passed.
Item number two, city manager agreement, approve the first amendment to employment agreement for city manager Kyle Lovell.
Motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any notes, any extensions? Motion's passed.
Item number three, agreement, authorize the city manager to sign the annual snowfalling and ice control agreement with the village of Lompsville.
Motion.
Any discussion with this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any notes, any extensions? Motion's passed.
Item number four, advertise for bids, authorize the water superintendent to advertise for bids for the sale of timber products.
Motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any notes, any extensions? Motion's passed.
Item number five, water board recommendation, approve the water board's recommendation to deny the request for a service line replacement at the expense of the water department's Benati pine diner located at 100 Jimsey Street, Lompsville.
Motion.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Some clarification on this.
Yep, so Drew, our water superintendent's here, let's go up and speak on that, Drew.
Good afternoon, everyone. I sent a packet to everyone on the common council, I don't know if everyone had a chance to review that. Is Rick here in the audience? I extended the invitation for him to come tonight on his behalf. Long story short, he had a discrepancy with his water line that goes on Route 5 in Lompsville that we supply water to. He claims that it's a defective line, it froze once 10 years ago. We, I went through the discussion with him to say that it is not a defective line because during that time, that once in occurrence of that extreme cold weather, that a lot of other people's water lines froze as well, and he was asking the water department on our expense to replace the line. I told him that we can't do that, everything in the water main to his residence, his diner, is at the customer's responsibility, that's a part of our rules and regulations, I shared that with him, but I did offer that we, I can at least bring up his discussion in his letter to the water board, at which, the water board, at which one of the members Dave Kimpe's here, we unanimously voted for us to not pay for the expense to replace the water line, but I did offer him a quote at the time, but it was a minimum quote of what goes into it, is material labor permitting, it's a state highway, it's a very difficult thing, but if we were to go and agree to do that work, it would set precedents that would change our rules and regulations, it would change how we operate, and if we do that one for all, it would be one for one, then one for all, so then anyone could come up and say, well, my line's defective because it froze once, so then the water department would have to afford that expense, at which the water department would go out of business, and we would have to essentially raise rates or change the policy. So with that being said, it was my recommendation that we would not do it, but we can do it at his expense. So that was it all in turn. I can go into more detail if anyone has any further questions about it.
So just to be clear, that water, the main line is on the opposite side of the highway?
Correct, and it's on in the vacant, and it would also cause a private driveway to get excavated along with work zones, that control plan that would have to get done along with permitting and permission with the department of transportation for us to do work on the highway.
I did see in his letter that he had mentioned that the line wasn't deep enough. How deep is that line? Is that accurate?
I, at the time, didn't know the depth. I do not know the depth of the line. There's other residents in that area of Lompsville whose line also froze at that time, too. When Jim Chamberlain was informant at the time, he was receiving calls, and they went out, and this was 10 years ago, but they thawed out those lines, which we can do as a claimed emergency response. We'll go out and snake the line and run hot water through their line to go and thaw it, and we advised him at the time, and still do to all residents of everyone in our water district in extreme cold event, to mitigate the risk of the line freezing, believe it as a trickle. He had a claim of it going through his septic and his sewer charge might be way up, but if you just run it as a trickle, it's a lot cheaper than paying for a whole new water line years from now.
Is there sewer in it? Is there sewer in it?
He has a well, so for that, his claim that it would disable his well, his septic, or, I'm sorry, his septic system.
If we, because this is a half-inch line, if we were to look at that, how many others would it affect, or would it just be the 99? Or would it affect?
It would be anyone upon request, because if it goes against rules and regulations, it would have to change through.
No, I mean, if you do the main, does that affect any other residents?
Neighbors or neighboring property with their...
It's just his line that goes.
Just right to the main, so it shouldn't affect them.
It's his single line that comes in the water main to his curb box and through his driveway.
Okay, so it wouldn't affect anybody else?
Other than during construction, no. But it's in an area that would affect other residents in that area for construction.
Okay, but wouldn't benefit them if they got a three?
It would only benefit an auto car. There's other residents in that area of Lambsville whose line also froze at that time too. When Jim Chamberlain was the informant at the time, he was receiving calls and they went out and this was 10 years ago, but they thawed out those lines, which we can do as a claimed emergency response. We'll go out and snake the line and run hot water through the line to go and thaw. And we advised him at the time. And still due to all residents of everyone in our water district, an extreme cold event to mitigate the risk of the line freezing, believe it as a trickle. He had a claim of it going through his septic and his sewer charge might be way up. But if you just run it as a trickle, it's a lot cheaper than paying for a whole new water line years from now.
Is there sewer in it?
Sorry?
Is there sewer in it?
He has a well. So for that, he would, his claim that he would disable his well, his septic, or I'm sorry, his septic system.
If we, because this is a half inch line, if we were to look at that, how many others would it affect? Or would it just be the Nutty Pine? Or would it, would it affect?
It would be anyone upon request. Because if it goes against rules and regulations, it would have to change the...
I mean, if you do the main, does that affect any other residents?
Neighbors or neighboring property with their...
It's just his line that goes to the property off. It's his single line that comes in the water main to his curb box and through his driveway.
Okay, so it wouldn't affect anybody else?
Other than during construction, no. But it, it's in an area that would affect other residents in that area for construction.
Okay, but wouldn't benefit them if they got a three inch?
It would only benefit the Nutty Pine.
I, I did see also that the regulations mentioned residential. I wonder if that's something we'll look into, anything that deals with commercial in regards to defective lines or anything like that.
You mean to replace them?
So it says section X defective services further states that defective residential services up to and putting one inch may be replaced. So my thought is if this is commercial, you know, it's, I guess a half inch line like this is affecting more than just a house. It's affecting employees and customers.
Again, but not, not our deal to fix. It may be affecting them, but this is, we don't want to set a precedent that we can't live up to later, which we would be doing.
Correct. It would just be a change of rules and regulations that would have a greater impact and risk increases across the board.
I'm, I'm just saying the precedent, we could say if this affects a commercial building, I mean, we don't have a ton of restaurants in the area, so it's not like we'd say...
I think that's a slippery slope to just help some, one business out and then just be...
And by all means, if there's a pattern of it, if it happens, you know, over a regular occurrence, then obviously we would deem that as a defective line and we would correct that and we would replace it at our expense.
You said this happened once in 10 years.
Once in 10 years.
And it was 10 years ago.
10 years ago. To his point, he's kept it every winter trickling, so...
Since then.
Since then. Since 10 years ago. So it wouldn't freeze, but what I'm saying is, you know, if they have to have my water trickling every time it gets cold.
But again, it shouldn't be our job to, to fix that, right?
And that was during a really extreme cold snap or rehab. Other people in that area that have had frozen lines too.
It was once in the last 10 years.
Right. So there was a couple of other businesses that occurred that were to them as well. Acrylic Designs had a frozen line. I don't have record if we went out and thawed them. I would have to ask who came in at the time. Who was this forming?
I did, one more question, sorry. I did see the quote included labor. According to this, is this correct? That's section X again. It said the customer would be charged for the average cost of materials only.
It's deemed if it was a defective line.
Oh, okay. Not resolved, I'm right freezing. And he's not willing to bear any expense?
Not at this time, no.
How much is the quote that we, that we do?
46.25.
And that's it to say if it goes into a second day or like we're trying to punch the line through underneath the road if we're trying to pour it and we had a rock and it goes into the second day, that's a minimum quote. That doesn't even cover the fees to account for the DOT, the permitting fees.
I, I just hate to have a business that's reaching out in their...
I do too. And it is my job to make sure that the water to goes to not only residents, but also as to commercials as well. But with me, and it would be no sweat off my back if I have to go and change the policy. But that is the main course of why I'm bringing it to the common council. He had the right to appeal, so I set him up to, to bring it to you. If we go down that route, it would just be a different can of rules and policies that would have to get changed.
I think we kind of have to go along with the water board's recommendation. We don't really know much about the inner workings of this. They've already reviewed it. Any other discussion or you want to vote on?
I guess, I guess we vote. I'm just, you know, we're always asking for restaurants. We have one in the area that they're having issues with their water. That's where I'm coming out from.
I get a two, but I get it. You said it's, the set of questions for...
I did that.
You know, so it sort of causes us lack of numbers, 46, whatever it was. It's going to cause us 46.
34 years prior to that, it hadn't froze.
There's no record of it that we know.
So he might really not need to trickle. He might not need to trickle.
It was actually more than that. It had been 10 years ago prior to that.
Well, again, it's not freezing because he's trickling it.
Well, we don't know that though. This is, the neighbors' businesses aren't freezing, you know.
But you said that in his letter.
But if it, I mean, no one, no one would know if it would freeze or not without him trickling it. It'd be, it'd be straight.
Have other people in the area, have they're frozen in the last 10 years? Any complaints? I don't have any record of that.
But I, but I get it. I mean, obviously, it's his business own.
Now, if it freezes over a certain time, then we would deem that as a defective line.
Right.
It's just for this time up to right now.
And I'm sure the water board researched it at length and looked into all of this already.
Well, we should, I mean, if we're being asked to have a final answer, then we should be privy to that information too.
Hundred percent. But I mean, that's what their job is. Why have a water board?
The information that I provided to you was the same information that I provided to the water board. So I think all the record retention, all the conversations that we had over here. The public comments from the audience, this is not how we run our meetings. There've been a couple of...
It stinks that we can't help that. I wish we could. Again, this is, this is the, the public comments from the audience, this is not how we, we run our meetings. Just our department head here. I know you asked a question earlier and now I'm telling you, you know, thank you. Right, to Mr. Cole. But yes, thank you.
Thank you, Drew.
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any no's, any extensions? All right. Motion's passed.
Item number six, board reappointments, approve the mayor's reappointment of Jennifer Bailey, Michael Gear and Bohem Dogg to the traffic safety boards of three or 10.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any no's, any extensions? Motion's passed.
Item number seven, budget transfers and amendments, approve the budget transfers and amendments as outlined by the comptroller or a third party duly retained by the City of United to perform such services.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any no's, any extensions? Motion's passed.
Item number eight, waive Calat Civic Center fee, approve to waive the rent fee for the Calat Civic Center on Thursday, December 8th, 2025, from 15 p.m. to 9 p.m. for non-very holiday celebrations.
I'll let Mr. Lovell discuss this because this was his idea.
Yep, so we were thinking about doing a holiday party for the employees. We didn't have the appreciation picnic earlier in the year, so I thought this would be a great opportunity to get together at the end of the year and just thank everybody for all the work in the city. This is not going to be funded by any taxpayer dollars at all. This is strictly donations. I'll be donating to this. So this is just for the employees.
All in favor? Any no's, any extensions? Motion's passed.
Item number nine, adopt local law, adopt a local law authorizing a property tax levy in excess of the limit established in general immunity law, section 3C. This would be a role...
Any discussion?
Yeah, so you can if you'd like a resolution to identify. Yeah, I can draft up something. 5.3. That's where we...
Hold on a second. Don't you need this?
So that can go into the resolution, it can't go to the local law. Okay, so for example, the resolution that you have, what you would do is have a proponent to amend the resolution to include a whereas paragraph. But the, the common council does hereby agree. But the common council is today free that in, I'm not concerned in the process of this local law that allows for a tax cap override. It is the desire of the common council not to see a tax increase of, like, whatever that amounts to. But I would be 6%. Like if you say 6%, if you don't know that 5.3, you're fighting for 4, 5.7. Or if you want to say 5.3, I don't care, but whatever that amounts to. It's not a natural legal thing. It's your resolution, right?
That's the way we're voting on it anyway. Good with it?
5.3. That's where we landed. It's 5.3. It's 5.3.
So we vote on the next one?
No, yeah, no, no.
Budget's not in the meeting.
No, no, no. This is, yeah, correct. This is the...
All right. Either way, I don't really care. Let's get this done. Sure if you trust me or not.
We have a motion to amend the resolution as presented as I... That's the motion of...
Everybody's good. And then Jim? No, we're just overriding tax cap to a certain point. Yep.
So the resolution is built into the local law? So your resolution, the way, the way that you have a resolution to act on local law. What I've said is you can't change the actual local law, but you can have a resolution that establishes the reasons for this, right? So what you've done is amended the resolution to that local law. So that's what you are, you're now voting on the resolution as a... To adopt the local law, okay. All right, because I'm, I'm getting some looks in that. I just want to make sure we're all here. So that will be the local law.
Mayor Rossi?
Yes.
Counsel Zerba?
Yep.
Counsel Aladi?
Yep.
Counsel Hitchens?
Yep.
Counsel Winchell?
Counsel Pogano? Yep.
Counsel Sincheck? Item number 10, advertise for bids, authorize a city engineer to advertise for bids for 2026 wastewater treatment plant chemicals, liquid iron salts and potassium permit.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any no's, any extensions? Motion's passed.
Item number 11, contract extensions, authorize a city manager to sign 2026 contract extension options with FNF Polydine Inc. for liquid polymer for the wastewater treatment plant, CES for lab services for the wastewater treatment plant in Homers Street in Landscapes.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any no's, any extensions? Motion's passed.
Item number 12, memorandum of agreement with CSEA, approve a memorandum of agreement with the Civil Service Employees Association, Inc. for the period of January 1, 2026 through December 31st, 2023.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any no's, any extensions? Motion's passed.
Item number 13, authorize the city manager to sign an agreement with Garten and Moutt and Utes, Inc. for professional services rendered in connection with the City of United as one based code under the BRI project umbrella.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any no's, any extensions? Motion's passed. Any new business from council? I'd just like to say thanks, everybody. We did it. We got through it. Appreciate everybody having us. It's good to have banter. It's good to go back and forth. Have different opinions. Can I get a motion to, again? All in favor? Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it.